I'm going to go ahead and call us to order and declare that we have a quorum of six members present. Welcome to this meeting of College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was available or made available to us at least 72 hours in advance, and we have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We have just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you have taken time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school district, and we thank you for your interest in and support of our students. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Honorable President Harris. We begin this evening a little differently than we normally do. Usually, we begin with the pledges of allegiance and the moment of silence, but we get this opportunity this evening to talk about some really exciting things that are going to happen and, you know, pay tribute and a little bit of sadness for three members of this board who have given so much to College Station ISD. So, we're going to start with the exciting stuff, and we're going to swear in our three new trustees. So, with that, who am I bringing up first? Oh, I'm sorry, I have it in my hand. Place three is Joshua Ben. And Joshua, if you would come on up, please, you are going to be sworn in by your spouse with your wife.
Yes, yes. You're in. Oh, man.
Speak in the microphone.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just use that.
I can do that. All right. Okay. All right. Dr. Chuck Duff, do that. Oh, okay.
In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas.
In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas.
I, Joshua Ben.
I, Joshua Ben.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of CSISD School Board Trustee.
Of the office of CSISD School Board Trustee.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God. All right. Now, for place four, Jeffrey Horack.
Raise your right hand, sir. Repeat after me. In the name and by the authority of?
In the name and by the authority of?
The State of Texas.
The State of Texas.
I, Jeffrey Horack.
I, Jeffrey Horack.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of?
Of the office of?
CSISD School Board Trustee.
CSISD School Board Trustee.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Place five, Kimberly McAdams.
Kimberly, raise your right hand.
In the name and by the authority of?
In the name.
In the name and by the authority of?
The State of Texas.
The State of Texas.
I, Kimberly McAdams.
I, Kimberly McAdams.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties of?
Execute the duties of?
The office of CSISD School Board Trustee.
The office of CSISD School Board Trustee.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
As the new trustees take their seat at the dais, I would like to ask that any relative, family member of any of our new trustees, please stand and be recognized. That's you, Horack. So, departing board members, we'd ask you to sit in the three best seats in the house right there. Liesel, would you, Mrs. Dr. Wesson, would you come on up as well? Thank you. And as they move to that spot, we will now move to our normal beginning of a school board meeting with the reciting of the pledges of allegiance to the American flag, the Texas flag, and a moment of silence. We've got folks to lead us here from College Hills Elementary and from Pebble Creek Elementary, and we have Principal Josh Hatfield from College Hills and Blair Grande from Pebble Creek who will be introducing their kiddos. All right, thank you very much. It's very much a pleasure to be here and to represent College Hills this evening. I do have two of our amazing Tiger Cubs here with us. So Santiago Grande Mankaya is here with us today, and so he loves math, and he is always working on fifth and sixth, seventh grade math. Every time I go down to the class, he's always doing great things there with math in the classroom. He enjoys being able to swim and play soccer, and then if he has any free time, he'll like to play some video games. So, it's always great to have him on campus. He's always a very kind and helpful scout and student on our campus. We also have with us today Ms. B. Baker, and Ms. B. Baker is on our recycling team at school, and she is in fourth grade. She loves social studies and anything that's about Texas or the United States. She is always wanting to learn more about that. So, it's always exciting to have her, and she always has a smile and wants to give everybody a hug, and is just really just very warm and welcoming, and it's always great to have her on our campus each and every day at College Hills. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Blair Grande, Principal Pebble Creek Elementary, very proud principal. Today, I had lunch with my kiddos here, Jack McGruder and Kendall Newton, and we were talking about what this was going to look like, and we were brainstorming things we wanted to share. First thing was, we had to match, so we are wearing our Pebble Creek shirts. And while we were talking and making our list, the kids decided they really wanted to share about themselves, so I'm going to turn the mic over to them.
So, hi, I am Jack McGruder. I am Pebble Creek Boy School Representative. I am in DI, Destination Imagination, which is basically a team that travels around and solves problems by acting. And I am also in Student Council and, uh, blah, blah, blah. Choir. I started the Pebble Creek Newscast with a friend of mine, and, yeah. My name's Kendall Newton, and I like to play volleyball, softball, and basketball, and I am in Student Council, Kindness Club, and Destination Imagination, and I do want swings at our school.
Now, say, now stand. American flag, you're good.
Now for the America flag.
Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We, 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 Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, liberty, liberty, and justice for all. On, honor to Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Now it is time for the moment of silence. Thank you, you may be seated.
Picture, guys, picture.
I'm just still laying my pocket.
You all come over here, the school board.
Hoppin', picture.
Oh, no, we are now. Hey, you guys, why don't you continue? Are we going to continue to stand, or are we going to, why don't we go ahead and continue to stand? Plenty of good seats available up front now, so if anybody wants to come on up. Mr. Vice President, we will now move on to recognitions. Item D2, trustees. It's time to recognize. Let me shut those doors. No, we're okay. I don't want to drown this out. I want to make sure we give them, all three of them, their due. Thank you. So, we are recognizing our three outgoing trustees, Jeff Harris, Quinn Williams, and Dr. Michael Wesson. I wanted to say a few words, and I will hand them, each of them, a token of our esteem here in College Station ISD and just for the members of the board here. Mrs. Nolan's going to come and also give them a gift and say some things, and then, as you are led to speak, that'll be great, and we'll finish up with Mr. Nugent, excuse me, here at the end. Board service is a difficult, is a difficult service opportunity. These gentlemen have given of their time away from their family for six years and up to nine and a half years. It's not just the Tuesday, third Tuesday of the month that you see up here. It is, it is an amazing amount of time that they spend preparing for these, these discussions and making critical decisions on the behalf of schoolchildren in College Station ISD. As we were eating our dinner and not discussing district business before the meeting, we were listening a little bit of some of the stories from their first meeting as they kind of gleefully got to share some of those stories with our new board members. I know when Mr. Harris came on board nine and a half years ago, we were in the middle, middle of a great deal of board training with the Center for Reform of School Systems, and that was really laid the foundation for many of the changes that we made and cast the direction for the Board of Trustees that still remains in effect today. When Dr. Wesson and Mr. Williams came on the board, six years ago, they had a meeting that they thought was going to last till 8:30, right, Kim? And it lasted till 11:00. We're probably not going to go to 11:00, are we? All right. And so, they had lots of, they jumped right in the fire and had lots of interesting things to discuss. But in every decision that they made, and they've made a number of them, these three gentlemen have done a tremendous job of representing the needs of current school students and families and future generations in College Station ISD. As you know, we probably, as most of you know, we grew 2,000 students between 2012 and 2015. That necessitated a bond in 2015 for 135.9 million, and those three individuals, gentlemen, did an unbelievable job of advocating the community for the resources that we need for our kids now and our kids in the future. And then the buildings that we've opened, the seats that we've added for all these families coming to our community, their leadership has been paramount and stayed in the direction for where we need to go as a school system. I'm proud to have worked as superintendent for each one of them, and I'm proud even more to call each one of them my friend. So, I'm going to call you up individually, one at a time, and give you a plaque, and then Mrs. Nolan will come up. All right. For, excuse me, for his years of dedicated service to the education of our children, CSISD School Board of Trustees, nine years of service, Mr. Jeff Harris. And for his years of dedicated service to the education of our children in College Station ISD, six years of service, Mr. Quinn Williams. And for his years of dedicated service to the education of our children, College Station ISD Board of Trustee member, six years, Dr. Michael Wesson. Accepting on behalf of Dr. Wesson, who's in Auburn, Alabama, will be his wife, Liesel Wesson.
Okay, I'm actually going to deliver yours to you first. It's kind of like Christmas, you get to open. Can I open them? Yes, I am. So, as you can imagine, we were racking our brains trying to figure out what to do for, to give you, to show our gratitude for your service. And one night, it finally hit me that you guys are so original that we needed original artwork done by students in our district. So, that is what we did. All three of our high schools picked a board member, and then, so we have commissioned artwork for each of you from our district. If you want me to share with you later what I shared with them about you, I will do that. But I only told them, each of them, I only told them a couple of things about each of you. Quinn, I think you can figure out that I told them that you have pet buzzards, hence the bird. But it was just a couple of things that I thought about you, and then also some of the highlights of during your service. And this is what they came up with, and I absolutely love every single one of them. And I honestly, I thought I was going to have a hard time handing them over because you all know how much I love original children-driven artwork. But I didn't have a hard time handing them over because they are so very personalized for each of you. So, and Dr. Wesson's is, is absolutely perfect. So, they all are. They all are. So, Jeff, yours, yours is, you know, because you go and sit and watch football practice every day. I was so very glad that they picked up on that. Yes, yes. So, you all got original artwork done by students in our district. So, thank you. Thank you for your service. And thank you to the students as well. And I have a couple of notes as also. So, all three of you, thank you. You guys, and I'm just going to talk like Dr. Wesson's here, because I know he's going to watch this. Where's the camera that I should be looking at? That one? I know he's going to watch this. Thank you for your service, and for me personally, thank you for welcoming me in two years ago and, you know, helping me get through that, that first semester especially because, or that, you know, the spring semester. That was a, we had some tough stuff to discuss, and you led, you led it very well, Jeff. Thank you. There are three things about all three of you that I admire, and that is that you're kind, you're passionate, some more than others, and very thoughtful in your words and your actions, all three of you. And I think that is very important for a board member to have, especially whenever you're dealing with, you know, the futures of children. So, thank you for that. And I needed to say, I need to say, Jeff, and this is from another board member, thank you for your, for leading us through a lot of difficult times, and your skill set and your wisdom was very much appreciated, and how you maneuvered through difficult conversations. And then, Quinn, you're described as being the salt of the earth, just kind and want the best for everyone, and thank you for that. And then, Dr. Wesson, I've got to say, I love Dr. Wesson's passion and his desire to make sure that all kids are very well taken care of. So, thank you, all three of you, for your service, and you will be missed. And you know what, though? Enjoy your third Tuesday of the month, now that you get that back. Oh, and I have to say thank you to the wives for sharing your husbands with our community for these six to nine and a half years. Thank you.
Mr. Harris, Mr. Williams, Dr. Wesson, I would like to say, echo a lot of stuff that has been said tonight. There's always, always differences of opinion, but I would say that the one thing that united us 99% of the time is we had a commitment, y'all had a commitment for the best of College Station ISD and the taxpayers of College Station ISD. And I want to thank y'all for y'all's service. Y'all have given a great amount of time over the last six to nine and a half years. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank you all three for your service to the community. Having only served on the board with you this one year, six, nine and a half, that's a lot. So, thank you for your commitment, always showing up, whether it's physically, mentally, asking the right questions. I just appreciate learning from you guys this year, and thank you again.
I'll just add my thanks, because I don't know if everybody knows, I served with these three gentlemen for a few years, for a few years ago. I had the opportunity to serve with, with Jeff for the whole, for three and a half years, and certainly learned a lot from his, the wisdom, but also the way you just can help manage the questions that, that we are, were faced with. Quinn got to serve with you and Dr. Wesson for a year, and so it was just getting to know you, but really also felt like I could learn from, from you in that year, but even over the last six years of watching you guys work, and really every time bringing the issues around to the heart of what I feel is important, which is really the students in our district, and bringing those conversations back to those important issues and, and guiding the board to make, you know, the, the meaningful decisions that help, that help the, the kids in the district. So, thank you so much for your service. I'm disappointed that I won't get to spend any more time with you, but looking forward to meeting the new folks. Thank you.
I just want to say to y'all, as a member of the community this past year and the years before that, not being on the board, just as a community member, to say thank you also for your service, and in particular, as a new board member, thank you for everything you took off our plate for this next year with what you, we all taken care of over the last, last couple of years. I think having those things that y'all took care of off our plate will allow us to spend a lot of time thinking about the future of the district and hopefully continue to move it in the right direction. So, thank you very much.
Having grown up in the district and, from when I was in high school, to watch y'all's leadership over the last six to nine and a half years has been truly rewarding to kind of see why I even wanted to jump into this ring. I look forward to it. I hope to take the attributes and, and passion that you guys have and that you showed into my service, and I appreciate everything you've done for us and in our district.
It was said a little earlier, thank you to the spouses for sharing your husbands with us and with this community, and there is, has been a tremendous sacrifice on the part of the family. So, I would love for the family members of the Williams, the Harrises, and the Wessons to please stand up at this time so we can thank y'all. And with that, I've been dying to say this for quite a while. This is a great time. If you want to make your exit, you can, or if you want to stay, you can, wait, what?
Mike, Mike, Mike. No, I don't care.
Oh, I forgot, Mike's gone. So, no, I was so busy wanting to do my joke that I forgot. Okay, come on up, Mr. Nugent.
It better be good. No, I don't want to do it.
I thought I was off the hook. Wow, this is, this is tough for me. This is tough for me. Five years. First of all, I can't believe I've been here five years. That's traumatizing in and of itself, but all three of y'all were here, and were such great mentors and great leaders, and we've thrown out the six years and the nine years. Over 21 years of board experience is sitting right here, proxy for Dr. Wesson. That's much more than we have up here with seven of us. So, there's, there's a giant hole tonight, and, you know, it is my hope and prayer that we will take what you have taught, at least the four of us who've served with you, and pass it on to others. But I want to get a little personal, because the three of y'all mean a lot to me, and you've given a lot to myself, to the community, to families in the community. And, and as I was driving over here, I was thinking about this little phrase that, that a lot of times, a lot of regrets in life are wrapped up in, "If I'd only known it was you." You know, I'm sure Reed has seen Ms. Elder in the halls at point, "Oh, if Ms. Elder, if I'd only known it was you, I wouldn't have done that," or something like it. Or, "If I'd only known it was you, I wouldn't have said that, Mom." You know, a lot, a lot of, a lot of little regrets. We would have changed the things that we had done. And I remember years ago, there was a family who, their job, their mission in life was to try to get me a date, and that is a tough job, and they wanted to set me up on a blind date. Anyone ever go on a blind date and you, and you didn't, and you find out who that person would have been? You know, "Oh, if I'd only known, you know, it was Brad Pitt. Ladies, any regrets?" A few, perhaps. My wife would raise her hand right now. But, you know, they said, "Oh, this, this girl, she's so sweet, and she gives music lessons, and she's a musician. You love music." "Oh, yeah, I need to be a groupie at this point in my life." And I said, "No, no, I don't think so." And it turns out, her name was Marty Seidel. She was a fiddle player for the Dixie Chicks, and I've got it on good authority that she was heard saying later that, "Hell, if I'd only known that it was Mike Nugent." No, but Jesus tells a story in the Bible, and it's a story at the end of time, and he said, "I'm going to come, and I'm going to divide people up, and I'm going to, to say over here, hey, you guys, you didn't see, you saw me hungry, and you can give me anything. You saw me thirsty. You did not give me anything to drink. You saw me without clothes. You didn't clothe me. You saw me lonely. You didn't give me companionship." And these guys were going, "Whoa, whoa, whoa! When did we see you hungry or thirsty or without clothes? If we had only known it was you, we would have helped you." And then he turns over here and he said, "But you guys did feed me. You did give me something to drink. You did give me clothing and companionship." And they said, "When did we do that?" And he said, "When you have done this to anyone, even the least of these brothers of mine, you've done it to me." And I say that because, and it's been mentioned, the care and the concern that all three of you have had for every student, and you have wrestled and you have struggled with really difficult decisions, and you never lost focus on what really mattered. You never did. And in the, in those tough times, it's been mentioned a lot, sometimes we found ourselves on the other side of the fence from each other, and there wasn't one time I questioned any of your hearts or your motivation or your intent. And we were always able to move on, shake hands, and, and keep serving together. And, and I thank you for your, your leadership, your compassion, and your focus on the job at hand, and that was to serve every student. And that was to serve every student and every family in this district, and you've modeled it so well. Mr. Harris, thank you. Jeff, thank you. Thank you for... As you look down here, we've got a legal mind, someone from the construction area, and we've got someone from academia. What a great combination to bring to this board, your expertise. And Jeff, as you would ask questions, as we were dealing with things, sometimes I would just go, "Wait, what? We're going to leave here, and my phone's going to ring off the hook because of that question." And I would get to my car, and I think, "That's okay, because it's a question that needed to be asked, and we need to know the answer to that." And again, I just, I want to thank you for leading us through some difficult times and always doing it with grace and compassion. And Quinn, they mentioned you're the salt of the earth. You are really the conscience of the board and a friend, and what a joy it's been to get to know you. And just the wisdom that Dr. Wesson brought, and I think you say "passion"? Someone said "passion." What a great word for him. I love the fact that he was always looking at different issues from different perspectives, and that was a gift to the board and to the community. So, thank you. Thank you, thank you. And just as a, I don't want to thank you really as a board member, but as a parent. As a parent of three kids, two who've graduated from CSISD and one who's a junior now, as the father of Kyle Haley and Macy Nugent, thank you for your service. You will be missed. You can't end any better than that. Thank you, Mr. Nugent, for those kind words. I would like to offer the three exiting board members the opportunity for equal time, if you would like it. Yes, okay. Come on up.
I'm going to bring my picture up here. Isn't that beautiful? Six years, I didn't expect to feel emotional here, but because of all the nice things y'all have said about us, it's got me a little bit emotional. But I guess I'd like to start and say, I am so proud to have served on this board. And you may not know this, but I went to kindergarten here at College Station School District and all the way through 12th grade, and my wife did as well, and all three of our kids have. And actually, my mother and father did too, and so what an honor it's been for me to serve this community on this board, and what an honor it's been to serve at this time with the leadership that we've had on this board. Valerie Yocan's not here. Carol Barrett's here in the audience, Jeff Harris. These people have, over the last, longer than I've been on here, but I was part of the, to where the board is today, and they have done some tremendous things, and I've been a part of that. And I'm very, very proud of where we are today for this district, and I'm excited to be off the board, but I'm a little sad, and, but I didn't, that's about all I have to say, and I wish everyone luck. I think y'all have still a solid group, and I wish you the best of luck, and we're certainly a phone call away if there's anything you needed. But thank you to Kim for letting me spend this time up here. It's been a lot. Thanks, everybody. Yeah, it is. It's in honor of Jack McGruder. There's the picture in case anybody didn't get to see it. First, thank you for that, and thank you for all the kind words. I'm not going to say all this, by the way, just, but I do want to say first, it has been an honor and a privilege to serve, to serve with the board and to serve you all and to work with all you guys. And I'm going to try to thank people. I'll probably do it in group, and I'll, by group, and forget some people, but first, the administrative team. Thank you so much for all that you do to support the board, but in also helping keep the board focus and our focus on the students, and that's important, and I appreciate it. And hopefully, you'll, I know you will, you'll do the same for these guys as well. Thank you to Dr. Coulson, who was the first superintendent I served under, and Dr. Ely. It's been great working with you. You have helped me learn more about the world of public education than I ever wanted to know, so thank you. To all the board members that I've served with, thank you. For those willing to serve, thank you. Past board members, I see Mrs. Barrett out there, thank you, but also to those that aren't here, particularly Dr. Yocan, who was willing to continue in her role year after year and made our meetings efficient and effective. And most of all, though, I want to thank my family. Will and Reed, thank you, guys. And most of all, my wife, Deanna. As Quinn said, without you and the support and the indulgence, we wouldn't have been able to do this, so thank you. You know, I mentioned that it was an honor to serve, and I want to tell you a little bit about my perspective on this before I go, and kind of why it's an honor to serve. I want you to think about kind of what it is we have here. We're at a time in history that's the greatest time ever. Quality of life, freedoms, technology, we couldn't have only dreamed of years ago. I mean, it's the greatest time ever. And in that, we live in the greatest state and the greatest nation that the world's ever seen. And in that state, we're in one of, if not the, best place to live and raise a family. And a large part of that is this school district. So, you think about that, what a special place this is, that it makes in the best time in history, this one of the best places to live, and it's this. And it doesn't just happen. It's a special place. I mean, I just want to recap a little bit. I mean, I know you've seen it, but when you really focus on the level of excellence our students are achieving day in and day out, it's amazing. And I'm not going to recap every email Chuck is gracious enough to send us, but we have artwork that's recognized statewide, sometimes nationally. We have, I mean, everything from ag mechanics and 3D printing and debate. I mean, if there is an activity or a competition, our students excel. And you think of the music programs, you think of the success we see. Students recognized at unprecedented levels, not just statewide. I mean, we just had a kid perform at Carnegie Hall on a global stage. We have a former student that's a Los Angeles Laker. I mean, that is awesome. And you think about recent years, most all of you have been part of it, either as board members or parents, the athletic success. I mean, district titles, state titles, state tournament appearances, these things are becoming routine. It's almost as if we're just wondering, okay, which of our schools is going to get first and which is going to get second in district? When you think about all of that, and that's just the tip of the iceberg, that's before we get into what really matters, the academic success. I mean, you all have seen all the awards and recognitions people get. I mean, you think about the fact that we have more national merit scholars in one year than many districts get in a decade or more. It's special. This place is special. Never lose sight of that. And I'll tell you, it doesn't just happen. It takes a lot of hard work. It takes good leadership, and it's because we're going to face challenges. You have alluded to some of them here tonight. There will be some disagreements. There will be differences. We'll be on opposite sides of issues. We saw one tonight in the calendar. Some of you don't know the full implications. Are you elementary focused, or are you high school focused? Are you AP and honors focused? Are you regular on-grade level focused? And all of these things are differences. Are you band, choir, orchestra, or are you athletics? Are you football, or are you basketball? Are you maroon? Are you purple? Are you Indian Lakes? Are you Pebble Creek? Or are you Southwood Valley? The answer for you now should be yes. You're all of them. You have to take ownership of all of it. All the people in this district have put their trust in you. That's why you're called a trustee, by the way. Now, some of these same people are going to come at you, and they're going to come at you hard on these differences, and that's okay. They can focus on that, and they can focus on their school and their neighborhood and what's in their interest, but you can't. You have to focus on the bigger picture. You have to rise above it. You have to own all sides of the issue and then chart a course for the entire district moving forward. You have to keep the focus. Your job is to keep the focus on student achievement and student success and not get derailed by that list of differences and whatever the next ones are, because there will be some. Hopefully, you guys have time to build some cohesive unity before they come, but they will come, and your job is going to be to keep them from derailing us. For you now, it can't be about your school, your team, your neighborhood, your issue. Your focus has to be what's in the best interest of the entire district, all the students, all of us. We've all put our trust in you. The future of this precious district is now in your hands. Thank you for your service. And with that, my name is Jeff Harris, and I live at 5205 Cascades. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, for your leadership and for your words this evening and the direction you provided for the district. If it would be all right, could we give all three of these trustees one last round of applause for their service? Mr. Vice President, that concludes our recognitions for this evening. All right. We will get to the rest of the meeting now. Item D3, like to recognize the artwork that is on the back and the sides. It is provided tonight by College Hills Elementary, Forest Ridge Elementary, Pebble Creek Elementary, Rock Prairie Elementary, as well as Oakwood Intermediate. Item E, we have the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have item H, I2, K4, K5, and K6. Are there any items that anyone would want pulled? I guess with no Dr. Wesson, there's no threat of that right now. Do we have a motion?
I make the motion that we approve the consent agenda items.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Nope. All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion passes seven to zero. We have seven now. Do we have to mention the quorum of seven now instead of six?
No, that was done.
Okay, okay. All right. Board reports. Do we have any reports from committees or other events?
I have a report from the foundation. Okay, so the Education Foundation had a very successful grant patrol, which took place on November 6th. It was kicked off at River Bend and presented a check to Dr. Ely for $185,372, which is for 60 innovative teaching grants. That is a record number of grants and a record award amount this year, so huge, huge work. We had a great group of board members, donors, and of course, our high school's school drum line, cheerleaders and mascots who helped really celebrate the day. I was terribly sad that I was not able to be a part of that, but I wanted to recognize all of the work, and I know a big sigh of relief of, phew, this is a big part of what the Education Foundation does for this district, and we are so very blessed and privileged. So, I wanted to give you all that report.
I already mentioned, but I think it's worth mentioning again, that DEIC met last week and worked through the calendars. They really did work very hard on that, and Dr. Trammell took that information that she was given and did something with it. So, well, I mean, it's, you actually put together new calendars, because those were not the originals, and there were four to begin with. So, it was a lot, it was a huge collaboration, and DEIC should be recognized for all the extra hours they put in on that, I think. And then Shaq will be meeting tomorrow and talking about the direction that they will be taking. And then also, I do want to say, I had the privilege of going on Grant Patrol, which is always so much fun, and I got to see grants awarded for everything from iPads to, there was a monster one, an art project that was, that's going to collaborate, I think it was kindergartners and fourth graders, or second graders and fourth graders, across grade levels, where one's going to draw, one, and the other one's going to sew it. So, it's just really cool stuff that the Education Foundation is able to award, that extra above and beyond that the teachers can do in their classrooms. So, thank you, Education Foundation. It's a fun day. It's a celebration.
Superintendent Report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Just want to talk briefly about upcoming events, and the next event for this board will be at 11:00 a.m. on Thursday morning. We are actually going to have to have a brief public hearing regarding our TIP plans, which you'll hear more information about that here in just a minute. That should last just a few minutes, and we'll move on to our legislative update, which is part of your board training requirements, and that should go starting at 11:00. We will feed you, and we'll go to about 1:30 or so on that. Region 6 will be here to train us for that. So, that is our biggest upcoming event in the very near future. For those in the community, after this week, we will have a full week off of Thanksgiving, and then we'll have the opportunity to vote on the calendar next year with some different Thanksgiving options, and you'll see those as that comes forward here pretty in the near future. I also had on my list, talk about Education Foundation, $185,000, 60 grants. I guess I just want to talk about Teresa Bendon, and thank you, Teresa, for your leadership. Teresa has been here now 10 years. In a way, it seems like you just got here, in a way, it seems like you've always been at the helm of the Education Foundation, and the things that we've done under your leadership, what we've been able to provide, not only teachers for innovative grants for what they need in the classroom, but for graduating seniors and for scholarships, has been tremendous. Thank you for your leadership and what you've done. It was a tremendous day, as a couple of people have said, on our Grant Patrol, and look forward to many, many more. Last thing I just want to visit about is marching band. This is, in marching band, for those of you who don't know, we compete every other year, so this was a competition year in 5A, and I just want to say congratulations to our College Station High School marching band and A&amp;M Consolidated High School marching band. Oh, thank you very much. This is the best performance we've had as a district with A&amp;M Consolidated, both of them advancing past regional into area, and A&amp;M Consolidated coming in ninth, and College Station High School coming in fifth. So, thank you. I see Mr. Seals here. Thank you, Mr. Aix, for your leadership, for what you do for our band program. And with that, Mr. Vice President, that concludes my report. Oh, I'm sorry, it does not conclude- Oh, I'm sorry, it does not conclude my report. We're going to do a little bit of what we call just-in-time training, new trustees. So to talk into your mic, Chuck will really appreciate this. The green light has to be on, so you have to hit it. And then you need to speak directly in the mic or we won't hear you.
Like that?
Perfect. Mr. Horak, how about you, Mr. Ben?
I think I got it.
All right.
Testing, testing.
What do you think, Chuck?
Password for the, well.
That ends my report, Mr. Nugent.
All right, item G, hearing of citizens. Do we have any cards, Ms. Horn?
I do not.
We do not, okay. Curriculum and instruction, consideration, discussion, and possible action related to targeted improvement plans. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Nugent, members of the board. Tonight, we have, for your review and approval, targeted improvement plans for five of our elementary campuses. Mrs. Molly Perry, who is our chief administrative officer and oversees assessment accountability, will talk about the requirements of the targeted improvement plans. And we have our principals from all five campuses here as well, should you have more information on that. And with that, Mrs. Perry.
All right, thank you, Dr. Ely. Good evening. This evening, in front of you, you have a copy of the actual improvement plans. The template provided by the Texas Education Agency comes in a fairly complex Excel document. And so it is not always the best for printing, but I've provided that to you all. And then we're going to go over the process of the development of the plan and speak more specifically about each of the campuses. As you may recall, back in August, we talked about our performance of all campuses across the district within the state assessment system. And this evening, we're going to present the culmination of the work that's happened over the last several months with those campuses that were identified. The way that this process works is, under state statute, we do have to develop these targeted improvement plans, or TIP for short, because we love acronyms, for any campus that has a rating of D, really D or F, although we do not have any F overall rated campuses, or a D in any of the three domains. And so as part of this process, we have to engage in what is called the Effective Schools Framework. This is a new process developed by the state based on research of what makes good schools effective. And so in that process, we go through a framework. And in development of the targeted improvement plans at the campus level, both Dr. Trammell and myself were very involved. And so we'll talk about what that looked like. Additionally, there had to be a public meeting, which each of the five campuses that are involved in the process held on their campuses. They provided notice to their campus communities and held that meeting to talk about the process as well as the plan and to garner feedback. Finally, we have to submit that plan to the Board of Trustees for your approval. And as we just very recently learned, we also need to hold a public hearing. So we'll be doing that later this week, or next week. So the purpose of the Effective Schools Framework is really threefold. Number one, we, across the state, have a common language for what these processes look like and what the different components of the plans include. Really, they are designed for continuous improvement, which is ultimately what we hope to see as schools and as school districts. And it really does help us to become more aligned in thinking about all of these different components and how they play into making schools really effective. The process is no different than change processes that you're probably all very familiar with. You have to know what your needs are ultimately in order to develop a plan and then implement and monitor to determine if the plan is being addressed and if it is being effective. But more specifically, within the Effective Schools Framework, we're really taking that evidence that we have around each of the essential actions, which we'll review here in a moment, and looking at how does that evidence look relative to the criteria of success that we hope to attain? Then ultimately, we want to really look and see which of these findings and the analysis of evidence help us to know where we should really leverage our energy. We obviously can't do everything all at once, but what can we really, where can we really focus in to see the most bang for our buck, so to speak? Part of the process also looks at what those barriers might be along the way, because we need to go into the implementation of the plan with a good understanding of what we might face so that we can stave those off from the beginning. And then finally, really using that self-assessment to inform the development of that targeted improvement plan. So mentioned the essential elements or the levers. There are five of those. And so each of the campuses went through the process of looking at each of these levers and analyzing the information that they have available about their campus, both qualitative and quantitative, to determine where are the strengths and where perhaps are the needs, with the idea that really effective schools do all of these things really well. So the first is strong school leadership and planning. This is not just about the campus principal. This is about the leadership of that school as a whole. So you may have level leaders or other campus teacher leaders that are involved in this process, because the principal obviously can't be the only leader on that campus. This is with that idea of distributed leadership and making sure that as we're having professional learning communities and meetings, that you've got folks that can really help guide those various teams along the way. Second, we have our effective and well-supported teachers lever, making sure that we are not only getting those folks in the door as teachers here in College Station ISD and at our campuses, but that we're supporting them and that we're retaining them and building their capacity so that our students all have access to the very best teachers. The third lever looks at positive school culture. And as we learned through the process of the training, this really isn't just about what happens on that campus and how people feel. It's not just a climate sort of definition. We're looking at processes and routines, looking at whether or not we have clear expectations for how we're going to behave as students and as staff in managing situations on that campus. The fourth lever is the high-quality curriculum. And as you all know, as we've been discussing over the last several years, this is an area that we've really focused in at the district level to make sure that all of our students have access to that really high-quality aligned curriculum, as well as the assessments and other resources to support their learning. And last but certainly not least, the fifth lever is effective instruction. This is really making sure that all of those things are coming together and that when the rubber hits the road in that classroom, our teachers are teaching in alignment with that curriculum and the experiences that they're being provided are really high quality. And we're really using assessment data to inform our instructional decisions and ultimately making sure that the needs of all of our kids are being met. So as we went through this process and we gathered information about each of those levers with each of the campus teams, we ultimately ranked each of those levers. And you'll probably notice on your plan, towards the bottom of the first page, each campus plan has an implementation level. And so those campus leadership teams evaluated themselves based on the data that they gathered and analyzed and identified the areas that were more strengths, the things that were, you know, perhaps not yet started or minimally in place. And not surprisingly, across the board, all of our campuses involved, College Hills, Creekview, South Knoll, Southwood Valley, and Spring Creek Elementary, chose the fifth lever of effective instruction. So looking not only at that objective-driven daily lesson plan with formative assessments, but also data-driven instruction. Although they all chose those particular levers, as you'll see when we go through some of the individualized planning, there were definitely nuances in the areas of particular interest for those campuses, depending on where they are and what their needs were. Additionally, both Creekview and Spring Creek chose the third lever of compelling and aligned vision, mission goals, and values focused on a safe environment and high expectations. Again, those look a little different for each of those campuses, depending on their needs, as we look more closely. And last but not least, Southwood Valley also chose the first lever of developing campus instructional leaders with clear roles and responsibilities. So we're going to walk through each of those specific campus goals. First of all, College Hills, as they went through their information, they found that they had a lot of really good systems already in place. But where they really wanted to focus in was that planning process and making sure that their teachers were being very strategic about those weekly lesson planning sessions really focusing in and making sure that we've got great formative assessment and that we're using that information to differentiate and meet the needs of all students. They also wanted to make sure that their support staff, so those other leaders and administration, were really involved in that process and that the instruction was really informed by the data and looking at our new assessment map, the measures of academic progress, and those teacher assessments. And so they really are going to focus in on the planning and supporting their teachers in implementation of effective instruction. For Creekview, one of the first things that their team really began talking about was the fact that they've had a lot of change over the last few years with both campus leadership as well as some adjustments in teachers. And so they felt like it had been quite a while since the vision and mission was initially established and that they really kind of needed to go back to their roots and as a team, really center themselves by revisiting the vision and mission and really just starting there in terms of getting everyone really focused in on the same page with what they're all about. They also felt like they needed to work on aligning their curriculum or their instruction with the curriculum and making sure that they've got planning protocols in place and that they are using those professional learning community meetings to really plan and improve their lessons. They also wanted to focus on analyzing student data and specifically, progress monitoring those students who are struggling and do need intervention. For South Knoll, they wanted to also focus on some of those same areas by using planning protocols so that they would have more structure in place to really work through the process of meeting the needs of their students and really focus in on student data. With the implementation of MAP, we've got lots, lots of good student data that can help with that process. And after meeting with them recently, I know that they are very much using that to really identify the student needs and work towards that. They also want to focus in on the differentiation of instruction to meet all of their learners' needs, making sure that not only the struggling students are moving forward, but also those students who perhaps are gifted and can grow as well. Southwood Valley also has a unique circumstance with new leadership in place this year for both their principal and assistant principal, along with some of the folks on their leadership team. They really were quick to identify that they need to develop capacity within those groups. Individually, they're all very strong, but working together as a team was an area that they saw needed to be very high on their radar this year in particular. And so making sure that they're supporting those teachers in how they expect for those collaborations to work with their professional learning committees. And ultimately, really wanted to see a result from this being high levels of teacher retention. They're going to be using extended planning templates to really work through curriculum, TEES alignment, mastery, and making sure that they're aligning those assessments as well as using the data to drive their instruction through the various content professional learning committees. At the, in Spring Creek, they also wanted to focus in on collegial atmosphere, specifically in building teacher capacity with both their content and their leadership skills, giving some specific examples of what that might look like. They discussed the need to make sure that their lesson plans really line up with the kinds of assessments that they are intending to administer and ensure that their differentiation is adjusting for the rigor and the needs of all students. They also talked about the need for that common planning document to really provide structure and guidance to their teams and ultimately to differentiate based on data-informed With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I do have a question. So I'm seeing that there are different levels of implementation. So some of these, some of these items have already been implemented, have already been started to be implemented.
Absolutely.
Right? Have we gotten any kind of, have the principals gotten any kind of feedback from the teachers on how they feel things are going?
Yeah, we have our principals here with us this evening and I'm sure they would be happy to provide some specific examples. Each of these campuses had their leadership teams involved in the process. And as part of that conversation, we discussed how this information would be disseminated with teachers to help them understand why things might be changing and ensure that for some folks, who this might be more of a second-order change, they would really understand the need for adjustment. You know, obviously, the system is really coming from the state in terms of state accountability and requirements. But all of the things that these teams identified are really, truly components of what makes schools effective. Unfortunately, the lens of outcome is the star in terms of where the state is measuring success on these particular plans. But we fully believe that we have lots of other measures to support whether or not the plans are ultimately effective in helping our students learn and grow. But if you guys are interested in hearing more about specific teacher feedback, I'm sure we...
Well, I was just interested because it looks like, as I was reading through it, it looks like there's a lot more focus on support for planning periods and long-range planning as well. So I was just wondering if teachers are already feeling a difference in just what they're thinking, if they've gotten any kind of feedback.
Yeah. Yeah. Do you want to slip on the mic or do you want to come up?
Yes, you have to come up to the mic.
Yeah, I think these guys are most close to the teachers and I think they absolutely can provide some feedback.
So one of my big things was the extended planning and implementing that on our campus. And so what that meant was the teachers took a few hours to really go through this template for the entire nine weeks, the second nine weeks. And so they worked together as content teams. So there was two to three hours for ELA and two to three hours for math. So they really did all the brain drain there. So when it came time to their weekly lesson planning, the idea is it goes much quicker. And so the comments from my teachers really were, a few of them were, this is how planning, I always knew planning should feel different and I think this is how it should finally feel. And then our weekly planning for some grade levels is going just much quicker and smoother and they're not spending as much time just trying to figure everything out. And then some were making the transition and helping them, giving them support with, okay, we've got this big, long document and now we've got our daily, how do we make this transition? But ultimately, they feel, they really value that time and they really value that process. And so they're excited to really get to the next planning and they're feeling like they're, just their day-to-day is much smoother.
Ms. Deluna, could you introduce yourself and tell us what your position in campuses for the new people?
I would be glad to. I'm Ally Deluna and I'm the principal at Southwood Valley.
And so are they, are they seeing that this is translating into the classroom as well, that their lessons are going more smooth?
Yes, because they're able to collaborate more during that, like what are we going to do? What's our I do, we do, you do going to look like? And they have more time to do that as a team during their weekly planning instead of, okay, let's try to figure out our TEES during the week and then we're all kind of on our own to plan, you know, because they only have so much time during their conference period. And so a lot of it is spent after school on their own. So there's more of that cohesiveness and time to talk through those things.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Molly, I have a question. The extended planning template, is that used consistently throughout all the schools in the district? Because I'm hearing, you know, that's a pretty consistent remark across these improvement plans.
Not necessarily. Each of the campuses have had conversations about what works best for them and their staff, but we're finding that that is a very useful document and we're seeing more folks begin to adopt that.
So I'm going to speak to that, Mrs. Green. So I've already spoken with Mrs. Perry and Dr. Trammell about this and I visited with the principals Monday when we met. We've, we actually had the principals who were involved in the tip process share a little bit about the process with the, with the rest of our principals on Monday morning and talking about how it works and the things that are frustrating, but really the things that are good about it. And the Effective Schools Framework is good stuff. And the process to be able to review our data and find out the things that are working, and more importantly, find out the things that we need to do better, is important work for us to do. So the challenge that I've laid before Mrs. Perry and Dr. Trammell is that I want us to try to find out the things in this process that can work for all of our campuses without it being so prescriptive that the state requires. So what are the good things in it that we can use, that we can leverage for improvement for all of our campuses? And that's what we're going to do as we work through that process this year.
Okay. I also have one more question. The MAP, that was, that's obviously an echoed comment throughout, right? The data-driven information to help drive instruction. How are, previous to MAP, how, what has been, and I know that you did, you know, a great presentation on what it's going to give us with, you know, testing in the beginning, in the middle, and the end. But what was... in the middle, and the end, but what was, help me understand what was being used before to help make these decisions and why this is, why we feel like this is going to be such a tremendous impact for these schools?
Well, honestly, there was a, a pretty significant gap that we feel like MAP is filling. So there wasn't a, a one-for-one replacement of we used to do this, now we do MAP. We did have curriculum and unit assessments and we did have some other district-wide assessments that were very specific to certain content areas or grade levels, but nothing as comprehensive or that would measure growth in the way that MAP does. And so, you know, that was a big component to the decision to adopt the MAP assessment system was really seeing that, that gap and that need to know across the board, across grade levels, across contents, are students learning and are they growing? And, and we're definitely seeing that. Dr. Trammell and I have been meeting individually with each campus leader and leadership teams and sometimes, and, and we're seeing that those conversations have really been stimulated by, by the introduction of this kind of data. And folks are really excited about the middle of the year assessment because that will be our second data point and allow us to see the growth component as well.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
No other questions? And it is an action item?
Yes, Mr. Vice President, this is an action item and administration recommends approval of the target improvement plans as presented.
Okay, with no questions, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the targeted improvement plans as presented.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, Ms. Perry.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to item K1, consideration discussion and possible action related to the annual enrollment review and report with FC Local. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, members of the board. As you recall, a number of years ago, we enacted Board Policy FC Local to guide our enrollment management. And part of that policy was called for an annual review and report to the board and the public about a couple of factors regarding our growth, both as a district and, and at our various campuses. You may recall that in the, I guess it was this last spring, we discussed and made a couple of minor changes to the policy. And one of those was we moved that up, we moved this enrollment report up from December until November. And so we are here to, to present the annual enrollment report and it's a report item only. With that, I'll hand it over to our Deputy Superintendent and Chief Financial Officer, Mike Martindale. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Dr. Ely and Mr. Nugent. Board members, as Dr. Ely mentioned, as per FC Local, we're providing an annual enrollment review and report. Each November or December, administration should review facilities and enrollment projection data provided to us by our demographers, including demographic data and updated five-year enrollment and school capacity projections and present those to the board. A few components of FC Local with enrollment projection, one component is facility utilization. So when we go through our projections in the out years, we'll look at capacity of those facilities and we'll use 85% of that capacity number and 110% of that capacity number and overlay, overlay that with the projected enrollment to give you an idea of how we're tracking with the use of that particular campus and those available facilities. Also, we'll look at comparable composition. This is where we look at our percentage of free and reduced students at our campuses. FC Local applies to intermediates, our intermediate middle schools and uses a marker of 15%. So we'll look for any variance among those campuses of greater than 15% and we'll do the same for our comprehensive high schools. And the value assigned through FC Local for that is a variance of 12 percentage points. So there's going to be lots of numbers thrown at you. Apologize, the side screen's not working, but I'm trying to, to work you through these. We'll start with our overall, our district, again, projected numbers for the next five years is provided by Templeton Demographics. And I'm just going to kind of walk across the row, the top row, 1920. The enrollment when Templeton pulled our, our data was 13,913. I can mark that below. Templeton pulled our data a little bit earlier this year. They pulled it September 12th. They typically pull it later, but that was so we could provide a November update versus December. In parentheses was our actual PEMS enrollment. That's what we submit to the state on the last Friday of October. So you can see, we actually grew some during that window of time, 13,940. And I can tell you as of today, we're 13,980. So Templeton projected a growth of 2.8% this year. Our attendance rate, our ADA at the end of the second six weeks relative to the end of last year, we're actually at 3.2%. So we're tracking a little bit better. And in that example, I'm speaking of average daily attendance. So that's enrollment as well as kids coming to school or not. So this, these are actual enrollment numbers. They're projected out for us, so looking for us to go over the 14,000 student mark for 2021, 15,000 mark in '22, '23. And then you see five years out, '24, '25, tracking at 15,705. And they're projecting our growth rate to be in the upper 2% and then kind of flattening out closer to 2% in these upcoming years. This is overall for our district. Excuse me. For our elementary schools. And again, I know a lot of data, so I'm just going to kind of walk you across the top row and tell you what each of the, each of those mean and then you kind of get a visual of all of them. So we'll start with college heels. The number in the parentheses or the 100% or the capacity number, that's considered 100% capacity for that particular campus. So 660 students. We apply FC Local to get our range for facility utilization. So the 561 is 85% of that capacity number and 110% is 726. So we look at this range when we think of facility utilization in our out years. So 1920, and again, the first number is what Templeton ran in their data. So when they ran that data on September 12th for college heels, it was 721 students. Moved a little bit when we submitted PEMS end of October to 723. And then, of course, the projected enrollments for that years for each campus out to '24, '25. The 727 is highlighted in red because it's one student over the 110% facility utilization utilized in the FC Local. So if it exceeds 110% mark, then I highlight that value in red just to draw it out. So is everyone with me so far? Okay. Oh, we'll look at Creekview as well. Capacity number 640. So it gives us a facility utilization number of 544 to 704. They were 534 at Temple, when Templeton pulled data, 529 at PEMS. And you can see the projection in the out years ending at 578 in '24, '25. The green indicates that that is left less than 85% of that facility utilization number. If there is no shading, it's within that 85% to 110% range. Okay? So we have capacity for the next couple of years at Greens Prairie. It's by design. If you remember, Greens Prairie was well over 700 before we opened River Bend. Pebble Creek shaded green, they fall within the capacity numbers in the out years, 593 by '24, '25. And the movement in this enrollment really is based on the development out at the racetrack, the Southern Point, and that is Pebble Creek's zone. So you start to see that neighborhood projected out and adding kids to their enrollment. We do have capacity at River Bend. You can see out in the out years with this still being shaded green. Another one I'd like to point out is the last red at Southwood Valley, 754 in '24, '25. And this really, if you're familiar with the midtown development on Rock Prairie behind Scott and White, that is that development coming onboard and additional rooftops there being added to their zone. Any questions before I move to 56? And I use the same kind of method for identifying on the other grade levels as soon as I learn which way it moves the slides. For our 56 campuses, again, I'll just start with top Cypress Grove, building capacity of 920 students, means their facility utilization is between 782 and 1,012. Templeton ran 646. We submitted 649 for PEMS and you can see the out years right at the 600 mark. That is less than 782, that's why it's shaded green. Remember, Beacon Trail is probably, this is year three, so we'd expect some of this because we've added a third intermediate school here recently, so we were able to distribute those kids. Beacon Trail, I do want to mention, 925 capacity at that building, 786 to 1,018. So you see them under that 85% mark, but they move into that range in the out years. For the 5 through 12, in FC Local, it discusses comparability for the intermediate schools. That, that marker identified in FC Local was a variance of greater than 15%. So I'll take a look at comparability. And again, it's a percentage of free and reduced lunch students at that campus. Cypress Grove, this is PEMS submission, demographer doesn't pull this. This is what we submitted to the state end of October, 39.14% of students at Cypress Grove, free and reduced lunch. And then I look at the other campuses, the other 5, 6 campuses and look for the largest variance to see if it falls within that 15% or not identified in FC Local. So the largest variance with Cypress Grove is with Oakwood and it's 11.65% difference than the economically disadvantaged number for Oakwood. Oakwood is 50.79. So you kind of see where I'm getting this number, it's just the difference between 50 and 39. For Oakwood, 50.79%. Its largest variance is with Beacon Trail right below it and that's a variance of 23.2%. That's beyond that 15% identified in policy and that's why that's shaded red. And of course, there's Beacon Trail, it's just the flip number for Oakwood. Something I do want to touch on here with Oakwood, just a couple of notes. Oakwood is identified as a Title I campus because over 40% of its students consider free and reduced lunch. Being identified as a Title I campus allows additional federal funds or resources to utilize at that campus to address the greater needs with it having a higher percentage of free and reduced lunch students. So Oakwood is the only non-elementary campus that's considered Title I. So it does receive some additional federal funding as far as support. Also, something which I'm sure you're all aware of, but I will mention, it also houses our dual-language program for the district at the 5, 6 level. So all of the dual-language students coming from the elementary level throughout the school district go to Oakwood and that can have an influence on that number as well. So we have a couple of influencers playing in on that value. Okay? And also, as I move to the middle school, remember this, we have, at one level, we have true feeder patterns. We have feeder patterns from our 5, 6 campuses to our 7, 8s. So as I move to the 7, 8, and we look at those numbers, of course, Cypress Grove feeds College Station Middle School, Oakwood, AMC MS, and of course, Beacon Trail to Welborn. So keep that in mind too, because I think you'll see the influence of the, of the dual-language students because after sixth grade, they go back to their zone, to their home campuses from middle school. So those, there's movement of those students. Any particular questions on this one before I move forward? Okay. I actually went the right direction that time, so I'm, I'm learning. So our middle school, A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School, 920. So our facility window, 782 to 1,012. You can see they're tracking less than 85% in the out years, around 700 student enrollment. Same for College Station Middle School in the 600s. And of course, Welborn moves within that range projected to for the 2021 school year. Same comparison for comparability at the 7, 8 level that we had for 5, 6. We're looking for 15% difference. Anything greater than that to draw that out. A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School is 43.9% free and reduced lunch. And remember, as I just mentioned, Oakwood is, is over 50%. So you see some movement there and again, your dual-language students are going back to their zone campus at this point in time. Largest variances with Welborn and that's a variance of 13%. College Station Middle School just under 37%. Its greatest variance is with A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School, just under 7%. And then you can see Welborn's number a little over 30%. And its greatest variance is with AMC MS at 13. So our middle schools fall within that marker in FC Local of less than 15%. Our high schools, again, capacity number, here's our range for facility utilization. 1920, when Templeton pulled enrollment at CONSOL, we had 1,854. At PEMS, it was 1,839. Projected for next year, 1,977. And then they move within that 85 to 110% capacity number in the out years, up to '24, '28 and '24, '25. College Station High School, capacity number, this is classroom space that limits this, is 1,950. Remember, the, the infrastructure, the hallways, the common spaces at College Station High School are built for about 2,500 or a range of 24 to 26. The classroom space is not built out to that. That's where, if you've heard any discussion regarding phase two of College Station High School, that's why. The, the common spaces are built for a larger capacity, but at this point in time, 1,950 and we actually have 2,000 in there. So the range for capacity, 1658 to 2145. Templeton pulled 2,075 and PEMS is 2,074. And you can see in the out years, we begin to have some capacity issues at College Station High School. They move outside that 2145 to 2183 here in '22, '23.
Very interesting to see the enrollment at CONSOL higher than College Station High School. It's going to be exciting times in 2021, '22. Is a lot of that due to the Greens Prairie Reserve? Are they taking those numbers in, some of the new developments in consideration? That one in specific?
So the changes that were made when boundary adjustment at the high school level happened and then was implemented in this year in 2019 moved significant number of higher-growth areas into the A&amp;M Consolidated High School zone. Pretty much before that, most of the growth areas in the southern part of College Station IST were in the College Station High School zone. So yes, Greens Prairie Reserve is a part of that. So are the neighborhoods that are on both sides of FM 2154. There's another development going out outside of Saddle Creek, you may be aware of down that direction. Then we've got things happening at Southern Point and the Murr development at Midtown. And so there's a lot more growth areas that are being factored into these projections.
So I want to, I'm going to add a little more to these numbers, however. We, we have one more year where there are students that are eligible to grandfather at our two high schools from when we implemented our last boundary adjustment at the high school level. So our current year juniors, there'll be seniors next year. So before you look at seniors 21, 2020, 21, those that are eligible to grandfather at College Station High School remain where they are. There's 100, there would be 100 seniors next year eligible to grandfather that were rezoned to CONSOL but are, can stay due to grandfather for their senior year in '29 at Consolidated. So there's a net difference of 71. So we did this last year and we were, we were rather close with our projections relative to where we're tracking now. We're going to take into account these students are eligible to grandfather and apply that to our projections for next year. So is everyone, we need to, we need to take into account because that will move these projected numbers a little bit. So it will, it will influence our boundary adjustment. our boundary adjustment efforts for one more year, Mr. Schaefer. And when you do that, this is what the projections would look like for next year if you take into consideration the grandfathering impact. So all I've done here is simply taking the Templeton's projected numbers, 1,977, I backed 71 out the difference of CONSOL's projection because of the grandfathering impact. So it'll project CONSOL to be low over 1,900 next year. 2,083 for CSHS, where they're going to have a net plus of 71 because the number of kids eligible to grandfather stay next year. So I added 71 to that. So I'm projecting them to be around 2,154 next year. So that's taking into account the second year of grandfathering. And actually, I think when we did this last year, it had 18, I want to say, 56 projected for CONSOL in 2,081 for CSHS. I may be off one or two, but we were very close to those September numbers.
Ms. Green has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. I was going to wait for you to finish. Okay. My question, do the numbers include or take into account those that are zoned for one school but attend another due to a program? Are the, is that staying consistent, or how are those factored in?
With, with Templeton, they're using probably attend or attends as opposed to reside, so it should account for the programming.
Attend, okay. Okay.
So what they'll do is they'll, they'll run both of them, but they will lean a little closer to.
Attend and reside. Okay.
Well, when you look at the attends and the programming that they have, it will recognize if a student's at a particular school, it's not their zone, so it rolls them through assuming that it's a programming.
Okay. Thank you.
And I assume that does the same thing for employees, right?
Irrespective of why they would be attending a school that they're not zoned to, yes, sir.
Oh, and I just added the out years. So once we get through a second year of grandfathering, then of course, your projections, our projections are consistent. So I add that in just so we account, account for that for our seniors next year. A lot of numbers, so I'll give you a second. Any particular questions on this one?
What is the capacity for College Station High School if we build out all of the classroom spaces at 2,500?
So when we did College Station High School Phase One back in 2010, 2011 for opening in 2012, the plan at the time was for classroom space for about 1,800 and a capacity for Phase Two at about 2,400 or a little more. You never really know how many kids you can get into a building until you live in it, really. And so really, the capacity for College Station High School without any portable buildings is 1,950. And so it will ultimately be up to future community groups and ultimately the Board of Trustees and the voters as to how big College Station High School will, can be. Some of the things that we talk about internally is going back to the original plan, which was Phase Two of College Station High School having additional classroom space for an additional 600 kids.
Okay.
So that's where we get the kind of 24 to maybe 2,600. But different leadership or different boards or different community could say, we want to make it a lot bigger or smaller. It'll just kind of be up to what they ultimately decide. The other things that we talked about when we built College Station High School Phase One was that in Phase Two, we would add in a third gym to bring it comparable to A&amp;M Consolidated High School and also build a black box theater. Both comprehensive high schools have auditoriums, but CONSOL has a black box theater and College Station does not. So those were the things that we considered way back in the master planning for the schools.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And I think what we, and I say we, administration and the board, we need to be cognizant of and be watching is what's occurring out here and understand that it also takes time to add classroom space to a building. So we just need to be cognizant of what things are looking like for us in these out years. As our comparability for the high schools, we look for 12%. At our high schools, consolidated low over 36%, and College Station High School, little over 27. So that would fall under that 12% identified in FC Local. And Dr. Ely, this is an action.
This is an action item. Yes, we have a recommendation. Thank you.
Correct. It is an action item. Recommendations here, it's also listed in the agenda. What we would be asking for the board to do is provide administration approval to explore placement of programs at our elementary school level and make necessary and appropriate adjustments to programs as early as next year. There are no other adjustments, but what this would do, it allows to look at all our program placement among our elementaries, see if there is a more logical location, somewhere we can utilize more capacity, and maybe look at addressing some overcapacity or projected overcapacity at some of our current elementary schools and manage that through movement and placement of programs.
So I'd like to speak to that a little bit. As you know, we built an open five schools in the last five years. Two of those were elementary. So we've gone from eight elementaries to 10. Also, this year, one of the major changes was the implementation through House Bill III of full-day pre-K, full-day pre-kindergarten. We added eight full-day pre-K sections at the beginning of school, before school started, and we've added an additional three since school has started. So where have we added? Well, if you go back to the earlier slides and you looked where we had the most capacity, we had the most capacity at Riverbend. And so they have, the Riverbend Bears have gotten more of these programs. So as we have evolved over the years with various programs at some of our schools to where they are closest to the families and kids who would attend those schools, and then the adding, having to add three programs very quickly this year and utilizing that primarily at one school, this gives us an opportunity to kind of clear the decks and be strategic about where we want to put these programs because, you know, two things. One, we need to share the ability for kids to go to these different campuses among our 10 campuses and not disproportionately affect one or two or three campuses based on where they're located geographically. And two, we have no plans for an elementary school for quite a while now. And so it will give us a chance to make some changes and keep those in place for a number of years. We are asking for the authority to explore this. We're not saying it's fruit basket turnover. We really are exploring where we could put some of these programs. We understand, though, that, you know, some, we can't have every program at College Hills and South Knoll, which is our farthest north campus, where a lot of our kids who are in special programs reside, and we have to have some down in Greens Prairie and Forest Ridge and some of our more farther south schools. So that is why we have this recommendation for you this evening to authorize us to, as administration, to go look at what changes we might be able to make as early as next school year.
And I'm assuming it could hopefully alleviate some, some of the issue at College Hills with the.
Precisely. They have a number of special programs at their school. And they have traditionally for a number of years because when I got here, we were five elementaries. You know, now there's 10. So that's, a lot of those legacy programs have been in some of our older schools, which have been in the northern part of the district. So yes, College Hills is probably one of the ones that'd be certainly looked at. Riverbend, obviously, for the reasons I just highlighted a few minutes ago as well.
Dr. Eagle, I like the word you just used, legacy. As I enter my sixth year on the school board, I think one of the things that, being sentimental tonight, some of the people that have been here, we spent hours since I've been on the school board trying to get us to this point. And I mean, if those guys were here, I mean, some of the decisions, just for y'all that are new, the 12%, 15%, I mean, some of those numbers were discussed for months. And so seeing this tonight, kind of with the, with the new schools, it helps a whole bunch. I wish we would have had some of this five, six years ago.
Thank you.
So at that, I would make the motion that we let administration explore different options.
For program placement at elementary schools?
Exactly what I was going to say.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
So I actually have some comments.
Well, we could get a second, and then we can have a discussion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, there is. So I definitely see the need for this, especially to alleviate some of that for College Hills and better utilize our campuses. I just want to make sure that, I mean, I know that you are very thoughtful in how you go about this, the administration is when you're exploring these, but I just want to just remind you to be mindful of the dynamics at the schools and how, how they could change when programs are moved around. I mean, I know that you, you are, but I just need to say it. And then also to, you know, whenever Mrs. Heath talked about the Head Start program and the children, you know, the kids that are in those, starting at those schools and then hopefully being able to stay in those schools. I mean, if we're going to be moving programs around, you know, I just, I think that should also be considered, trying to see if some of those kids could stay in that elementary school. So.
Appreciate the comments, Mrs. Nolan. Everything will be considered and everything will be given its, its due discussion. One of the issues that we, that will confront us is where our schools are laid out geographically and where students who are involved in various programs reside. We, somebody's going to have to go to a farther south school. And so that's just one of the things that we're going to look at. I certainly understand the desire to, and the effect that moving some of these programs can have on, on schools and on school support. And so we're mindful of that as well. And I said it earlier, this is not intended to be fruit basket turnover. We're going to be thoughtful about this. We're exploring this. We, there is a possibility we come back and make no action. But I think there's at least a few things that would behoove us to do as a district to more effectively and efficiently use our facilities and moving in the future and disrupt as few people as possible.
No, I think it's smart. I think it's smart doing that. And I applaud you for doing that. And I just, I just had to say something. So, thank you.
Dr. Ely, maybe a new board member type question, but, and I'm sure it fits into the category of, you know, how do you eat an elephant one bite at a time? Looking at the utilization numbers for like the intermediate schools, that same issue appears to still, still be there, and especially as we go out a few years. Is this, are we just focusing on the elementary schools at this moment and then potentially moving beyond that down the road?
We are focusing this year on elementary and have no plans, at least at this point, to look at programs at other levels. The thing about FC Local and this annual report is it allows us to look at trends and monitor those trends over time with, with nothing in the pink in either intermediate school or middle school. I think it's, we're safe that we're in the next few years that we are fine in our facility utilization. Since we'll be coming back again next November and the November after that, if there's changes of that, that, that could require us to look at, and I encourage you to go back and look at FC Local, there's a number of different options we can look at, not just program placement, but transfers and all sorts of other things that are at the administration's disposal. We can continue to look at those trends annually and decide what we want to do. So what we know now is that, you know, yes, we are standing pat with three intermediates and three middles, but we have this window of opportunity now where we have 10 elementaries and adding those two in the last five years, it's really incumbent upon us to try to see and be, be more strategic about where we place our programs.
So I guess, Dr. Ely, my, my other part of that plan, is there a timeframe on this? Is there, is this like a five-year goal where these changes get implemented and then, you know, they suffice for five years? Or are we, you know, being visionaries and looking, you know, I honestly, we understand from the data we, we gather and are presented with, you know, we know where we're at 2425. But I mean, is that what we're trying to accomplish just to 2425 by doing this?
So what we do as a part of this annual enrollment report is look five years down the road. We actually get 10-year projections from the, from the demographer, but if you go past five years, you go past three or four years, it's a, it's a guess. So that's, that's why when we crafted that language to look at five years, I think that was smart. And not, I think I said at the workshop, don't fall in love with any numbers. So, so what we are trying to, we have this window of time now to address our program placement at the elementary schools in whatever way that ends up looking like. And we have this time to kind of pause and slow our breath with not going to the voters for any bond issues in the near future, not opening any other additional campuses to really look at that and, and smartly try to be efficient with the use of our facilities.
Any more discussion?
I do, oh, sorry.
Now, go ahead, Ms. Green.
Late to the microphone. I do, I do appreciate the question, Josh, that you asked about, and both of you, regarding programs on other campuses. And just as more as a comment, as we, you know, if you'll go to the high school slide, you know, there is a potential opportunity for us to start discussing, you know, what that looks like for the high school level. If, you know, if programming could be different versus having to go to the boundary lines or anything else, you know, if we couldn't look at those programs next versus just the elementary. So just.
So right now, at the high school, pretty much the programs are mirrored at both comprehensive high schools, with the exception of some specialized career and technical education programs, three at College Station High School and three at A&amp;M Consolidated High School. We were very intentional back in the early teens, 2010, 2011, when we drafted the high school transition plan to put some of those higher-dollar CTE programs that have a lot of equipment costs and put those at one high school or the other. And as, as we have shared with the board, on CTE transfers, there's, there's a lot, is very close the number of CTE transfers we have going from one school to the other. So we try to have those same, similar programs at both of our comprehensive high schools. If you, if you roll back to fifth through eighth grade, we have most of the same programs as well. Some of the differences are the dual-language program is only at, at Oakwood Intermediate. And then some of our special ed programs, we have clustered at one of the three schools at each level. So we'll have the AB program at one, and we'll have Castle another, we'll have at Life Skills. As we get bigger, we, we can look at the possibility of having all three programs at all three campuses. And that has some sort of benefit to us. But honestly, when you have, when you have Life Skills teacher and a number of them in sections at one school, when those expand and contract, you have a lot more ability to expand and contract your staff with them. When you have them at three different campuses, it becomes a little bit more of a planning issue, especially as we have vast changes in enrollments during the school year. So those are obviously something we look, and from a philosophical point of view, we have those discussions administratively. As we continue to grow and grow from a small district to a big district, we're always looking at those different programs and how we can best situate them and locate them to meet the needs of all of our students.
Great. Thank you.
Well, and just a quick word. And again, I, thank you for the report, by the way, Mr. Martindale. It's really good stuff. But the high school numbers, I don't think surprise any of us. But what's good about it is that it's on our radar. And if we need to talk about program, I mean, obviously, it's, it's turning pretty pink, you know, you know, I would imagine this is going to dominate discussion in the next year or so, you know, what, what do we do here? So, which is why we do this. Any other comments? All right. Well, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. All right. Motion passes seven to zero, which takes us to K2. Receive annual investment report for fiscal year ending August 31, 2019. Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Mr. Nugent, members of the board. This is another annual report. This is our investment report. As you recall, our fiscal year ends August 31. And so we will, Mr. Martindale will take us through our annual investment report, which will lead us into item K3, where we have a resolution for you based on what you learn here. So with that, Mr. Martindale.
Yes, as Dr. Ely mentioned, K2 is a report only. It's kind of a, it's a summary. What I'll provide is a quick overview of the 27-page attached annual investment report that's attached to your agenda. And again, this is a summary of our returns for the 1819 year. Again, fiscal year ended August 31, 2019. year. Again, fiscal year ended August 31, 2019. The policy that governs all of our decision-making as far as investments is policy CDA, legal and local. Legal stems from the Public Funds Investment Act, and that dictates what we can and can't do when it comes to investing public funds. In order of priority, and this drives our decision-making on investments, it did last year, it still does currently, first and foremost, preservation of principal. In other words, we're not taking big risk and losing taxpayers' money. That's number one, is safety of principal liquidity. We have to meet our cash flow needs. A lot of cash moves through the school district on a monthly basis. Be aware of the makeup of your portfolio. And then lastly, yield. So not necessarily the priorities you might use if you were investing your own, your own private funds. But again, as far as Public Funds Investment Act priorities of our investments as stated here, preservation and liquidity are the two drivers. For 1819, again, our focus was preservation of capital and liquidity of funds, or again, making sure we could get to funds in a timely manner and there weren't fees involved or anything of that nature. And, and try to make as much interest income as possible along the ways. We utilize three different investments, two pools, and our financial institution, our bank, BBNT. And I'll show you an upcoming slide from page six. It'll kind of show you the returns that we receive from our bank as well as our investment pools. There are other options available to us, though, but when we kind of take a look at everything and we look at return to a degree, but again, safety and the security of the funds, as well as the ability to get to them and meet our cash flow needs, those drive things. Other things that we consider, some do have fees, have a maturity date on the investment, and we could pick up maybe a little more interest income. But again, when you weigh that on cash flow and security, it led us to the, to the pools and the bank for 1819. This is from page six of the attached report. The, kind of the, the three-month T bill, which is the industry standard, is the lighter green, tracking around the little, 2%, a little bit above. Our two pools, text pool and loan star, all tracked last year right around the same rate as the treasury bill, the three-month treasury bill. Again, you can see how the bank performed for us last year and, and really has performed best, that guaranteed yield for the last couple of years. We are with the bank for 1819. It provided us 35 basis points above the Fed guaranteed rate. So you can see when the feds, if you look at the, the movement on that bank rate, each time the feds move the guaranteed rate, you would see our bank tick up 35 basis points from that. We ended the year at 2.85% at the bank and a little less than 2.2 are where our pools were performing. Page nine is where we had our funds. Not probably the most diverse. We have almost all of our funds at the bank. The reason being, again, is they're secure. It was paying the best rate and absolutely no concerns whatsoever for cash flow. So that's been our practice the last couple of years. I can tell you that as Mr. Lassiter's come on board, I know he's diversified our funds a little more so in current year with the addition of another pool. And I know he's also exploring CDs because our bank is not performing as, as well as it has the last two years. But this is for 1819. Earnings by type, if you look at year-over-year, 1718 to 1819. And we'll, I'll discuss, the larger ones, general fund went from a million in interest earnings to a million six and an increase in our debt service fund as well. Two things contribute to that. First, we have more money. There's just more cash there. In addition to the fact that we're, we were securing a higher rate because the feds, again, will move that target rate and the bank return moves relative to that. So two things contribute to those higher earnings, just more cash on hand and increased returns. The construction funds I want to mention because it went from 1.1 to, to about 650,000. The reverse there, we still had the higher rates. However, we have less of that construction money remaining because if you look back two years, we still have funds relative to getting Welburn built as well as Riverbend. And then 1819, you have funds remaining for Riverbend. So less money there. We earned a higher rate, earned less because we were capturing off a lower cash balance. 13% increase over previous year, which yielded us an additional $340,000. And again, I've mentioned the bank on several occasions now. They're just secure. They were paying such a competitive rate, better than anything, really, without going outside and looking at maturity dates and assuming a little bit of risk of some sort. On pages 17, 18, a vast majority of your attached document is, is policy, but pages 17 and 18 speak specific to investment officer training. The investment officers are myself, Mr. Lassiter, and Chris Neeley, our assistant director. We're all three up to date on the required training. Your initial year, you assume a role regarding, in responsibility of making investments or being a part of that decision. You're required to acquire 10 hours of training and then eight additional hours every two years thereafter. Pages 13 through 27 are the policy, the legal, the local, our practices. Business offices review that. We're not recommending any particular changes. The legal portion of it is tied up with Public Funds Investment Act. You can't adjust that. The local policy allows us to explore acceptable, acceptable investments and the priority that I listed earlier. So again, you'll be looking at the, you'll be taking action on the next action items. But in the investment policy, it does capture the fact that we're not recommending any changes to this policy for the upcoming year. In a report only, no action is necessary on this one. I'll be happy to answer any particular questions.
No questions? My only comment is it better than it was a few years ago?
Interest rates are going the wrong way right now, though.
All right. So it takes us to K3. Consider adoption of the resolution stating the Board of Trustees has reviewed the district's investment policies and strategies.
Asking board's approval, the resolution simply states that we're not recommending any changes to our investment policy, CDA. We're required by Public Funds Investment Act to capture that in a document or a motion.
And do we have a motion?
I move to accept as presented.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. Martindale.
Thank you.
Now, this will take us to L1. Consideration, discussion and possible action on the approval of an amendment to the interlocal agreement with Brazos County, Texas concerning the School Resource Deputy Program. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Nugent, members of the board. It's our pleasure to bring to you this evening an amendment to our interlocal agreement with Brazos County, the Brazos County Sheriff's Office. A number of years ago, we had the opportunity to find an additional partner in the community to work with us to provide safety and security services through School Resource Officer Program. And I just want to commend and thank the Commissioners' Court, Brazos County Commissioners' Court, and Brazos County Sheriff's Office for coming to our rescue and working with us and being such great partners with College Station ISD. We, we have a School Resource Deputy, as you are all aware of, at all of our middle and high schools. We have, since the last time that the agreement was ratified, we have an additional school and we have an additional officer on top of that providing supervisory support. So that will be one change that we are offering forward in the amendment. The other one I just wanted to highlight to the members of the board and the public is this. In an emergency situation, I think all of you know, we have cameras in all of our campuses that, that capture what's going on in a number of places in there. This amendment that we have before you this evening would allow, in an emergency situation, officers from the Brazos County Sheriff's Office to be able to have access to our internal security cameras. We think that that is an important change to make. And should we have the unfortunate tragedy that could potentially happen at any school or school district, we want to give those, our, our partners in law enforcement, every means at their disposal and our disposal to do what they can to keep our students and staff safe. So that, those are the two changes that Mr. Hall will be explaining to you. But we're, again, I just want to say thank you to Judge Peters, the Commissioners' Court, our two representatives that, from, that oversee the area that encompasses College Station ISD, and the Sheriff's Office for their leadership and their partnership. And with that, I'll hand it over to John Hall, our Executive Director of Facilities, with more information. Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Dr. Ely, Mr. Nugent, members of the board. As Dr. Ely stated, the agenda item that I'm presenting this evening is, is meant to strengthen our school safety program by providing more tools to our law enforcement officers in the event of actual emergencies. We want to give them every advantage we possibly can. So that's a big part of this. For a little background on this, back in February 2017, the Board of Trustees of College Station ISD approved an interlocal agreement with Brazos County, more specifically the Brazos County Sheriff's Office, to create the School Resource Deputy Program. And I have included that original document in the attachment for you reference if you need to take a, take a peek at that while we're, while we're going through this. Since that time, the Brazos County Sheriff's Office has provided College Station ISD with School Resource Deputies at all of our high school and our middle school campuses to, to fill a critical safety and security role for the district. We're now in our third year of that, about halfway through our third year of this program. And it's been working remarkably well for us across the district. One of the things, in an effort to continually improve our response to active shooter events, College Station ISD decided to allow Brazos County Sheriff's Office to access our live camera feeds, not, not just the high school and middle schools, but in all of our campuses, in the event of an actual emergency situation. So really what this means is, for instance, if you had the, the most horrible thing that we could imagine and have an active shooter event happening in a school, this would allow the Brazos County Sheriff's Office in their Situation Room to tap into this and obtain the live camera feeds and then funnel those right back to the responding officers and the vehicles who were there at the school. And so you can see, this is a pretty powerful tool if we could get all of this put together. So as we started processing this, we realized right away that this created a legal responsibility on our part to, to make a very clear definition of how we were going to process this, which would keep us, keep us clean with the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act of 1974. Most, most of us known that as FERPA. So this is, this is what we've included in the amendment. If you look at the, the second page of that, I'll, I'll read it briefly. It's just two sentences. Section 5.1E, it states, "In situations of a health or safety emergency as determined by CSISD, the Brazos County Sheriff's Office will be provided remote access to CSISD surveillance equipment through means of a secure login and password system or similar secure means. The extent of this access will be determined by CSISD and will be administered and documented in accordance with the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act of 1974, otherwise known as FERPA." So that is the camera access piece of, of the amendment. The second piece is what we wanted to do is clean up an item that we've, we've really been processing for about a year now. And that is to define the duties of the SRD Sergeant. And his duties are really distributed across the district in lieu of a single campus assignment. So, you know, we've, we've used the term rover for this before, too. But basically, what, what the, the SRD Sergeant does is he backs up the other six campuses who have SRD assignments on their campus. For instance, if they're, they're off for training or sick or taking someone to jail or whatever the case may be, that he could slide in there and catch that campus and it wouldn't be left uncovered for the day. So, and there's some other reasons to have some backup, too. But Sergeant Jacob Yoder fills that role very effectively for us right now. And he's even been able to help us out on our district safety team, some processing and even some other stuff that are on the elementary and intermediate school campuses, too. So this has been very, a very positive thing for us. So with, with all of that said, it's the recommendation, it is recommended that the Board of Trustees of College Station ISD approve the amendment to the existing School Resource Deputy interlocal agreement between Brazos County and the College Station Independent School District, which defines camera access and SRD Sergeant duties. And with that, I'd love to answer any questions you might have.
I have a, sorry, I have a quick question.
Sure.
What is the process for the Sheriff's Department to be notified to access the cameras? Like, is there, is there a process in place if there's an active shooter situation? You know what I'm saying? What is the notification to the Sheriff's Department?
It could come to them in a couple of different sources. You know, a 911 call going through dispatch, they'll know, they'll know automatically when, when emergency calls go out like that. A couple of us are notified in this room. Dr. Ely knows right away. Chuck Glennonwinkle knows right away. I know right away. And if any of us get, get the first message, we get it to the others, too. But, but automatically it goes back to, to dispatch and, and they notify everyone. So in the event of an active shooter scenario, we would have not only College Station PD, we'd have Brazos County Sheriff's Office, we'd have, we'd have law enforcement officials from the whole county coming in because it all goes out over their radios instantly. So.
Okay. I was just speaking to like the, you know, the procedure that would be in place to notify, right? If so, if something was happening and if there was a procedure on campus.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To notify.
Well, one of the things that we've, we've recently put into effect is part of our public address system, where we can automatically hit a couple of buttons on our, on our, on our console phones in the office area, and that automatically sends a notification as well.
Okay.
At the same time, a pre-recorded message of Chuck Glennonwinkle's voice comes out and tells everyone it's time to go into lockdown or lockout or whatever the case may be.
Okay. And I also just want to comment, and I think this is excellent. Thank you for bringing this to us. I think it's all, you know, in this day and age, it's very scary to think about, especially in our community. But I'm sure all of the communities that this has happened in, this is something that they said that would never happen there either. So I'm glad that we are taking some proactive steps to assist our law enforcement to look in and, and be able to, to assess, like you said. And what, what really resonated with me is that they're going to be able to help first responders of what's going on inside. So I appreciate this. Thank you.
Well, we always hope for the best, but prepare for the worst.
That's right.
All right, we have the recommendation. Do we have a motion?
I'll motion to approve as recommended the amendments to the, oh, interlocal agreement with Brazos County concerning the School Resource Deputy Program.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion passes seven to zero. And this will take us to M1, executive session. The Board will meet an executive session to discuss qualifications of new executive board nominees. The executive session deliberations will be held pursuant to the personnel matters, closed meetings, exception to the Texas Open Meetings Act as set forth in section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. So we will.
Any action be taken?
Yeah. And if any action is to be taken, which I expect there will be, it will be taken afterwards. So we will reconvene. I don't expect to see very many of you. Thank you. All right, we're called back to order.
10:44.
10:44.
At 10:44. Wow, that is late. 10:44 PM.
Does someone have a motion?
Yeah, yeah. Does someone have a motion for our, from our executive session?
I make a motion to, I nominate, or wait, to nominate Michael Schaefer as president, Geraldine Nolan as vice president, and Michael Nugent as secretary.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All, all.
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. All opposed. All right. Motion carries seven to zero.
We need to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Oh, that's light.